...the Monday, January twenty-fifth, Raymore City Council meeting. Ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Abdelgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
Present. We do have a quorum. If everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have a presentation tonight.
Whereas Ali Abdelgawad has served the citizens of Raymore for over fifteen years in various capacities, including his current assignment as a police lieutenant, and whereas Lieutenant Abdelgawad's career has been marked by exemplary dedication to community, and he has distinguished himself in the law enforcement profession, and whereas the FBI National Academy is most prestigious executive leadership training program for law enforcement commanders, and attendance is by invitation only, and whereas less than one percent of all law enforcement are selected to attend the FBI National Academy, and Lieutenant Abdelgawad has graduated to become a member of this elite group, now therefore I, Peter Kirkoff, mayor, and the members of the city council, recognize and commend Lieutenant Ali Abdelgawad for achieving this distinction, and extend best wishes for continued success.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. Fearborn. Well, honestly didn't know what to say. I walk in and my whole family is sitting in the council chambers, and I didn't know why their sudden interest in city politics. I do have to say thank you. Number one to all of you, being as how you guys, in the very beginning, approved the budget that had these training costs in them to send me, and for allowing me to be able to go. Likewise, Mr. Fearborn, for approving it after the chief and Captain Wilson submitted my name, and chief had a big hand in getting me approved, and I thank you for that. It was an honor. It was an honor. It's really neat to be able to get a proclamation and be in the paper and things like that to go to the FBI National Academy. I had a great time. I learned a lot. There was a lot of networking, and I had a great experience, and honestly, everybody that should be getting in the paper are the people that did all the work while I was gone. My family worked for ten weeks by themselves. Kids helped. My mom helped, all sorts of stuff. In-laws, everybody helped. Captain Wilson was stuck doing all of my job, as well as his, while I was gone, and they never, never called. There were lots of people there that were getting phone calls every day from the people that they worked with, with problems and issues, and they either didn't need me, or they just wanted me to have the best experience and learn as much as I possibly could, and I did. So I thank everybody that had a hand in it, and thank you, council, and Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
There are no personal appearances, so we'll move on to staff reports.
Thank you, sir. I would call on the city clerk, Jeanne Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Good evening, mayor and council. Each year, the city of Raymore adopts an ordinance establishing certain procedures to disclose certain conflicts of interest with the Missouri Ethics Commission for certain officials and candidates for elected offices. This staff report verifies that the proper reports for the city manager and the chief purchasing officer have been filed with the Missouri Ethics Commission as required by the May first deadline. Those documents are available for inspection and review in the office of the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. I would ask Mr. Grass to make a report for the public works department.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I submitted a monthly report for the activities of our engineering and public works department. I'd like to take a moment, and about a year ago, I was given another hat, which is buildings and grounds, and I want to give you kind of an update on some projects that our building maintenance technician, Daryl Quoddy, has been working on. Earlier this year, or late last year, early, our summer, we converted all of the fluorescent fixtures in city hall from fluorescent to LED fixtures, and we've been tracking energy consumption and are realizing an average of about twenty percent reduction in our, in our energy savings. We are also in the process of, there are a number of lights and fixtures that are in the bays of the public works building that are in need of replacement. Daryl worked with our electrical contractor to submit a rebate application to KCPNL, and we received notice last week that we did qualify for a rebate for about fifty percent of the project cost, so we will be moving forward with that. We are also working on replacing the flagpole and doing some additional lighting in the circle around the flagpole, and we'll be seeing that coming forward in shortly here. That concludes my report.
Questions?
Mr. Grass, I'd just like to commend you again. I've seen a distinct change in the handling of your people to use an overused quote of "thinking outside the box", and it's just another example of that. It's really shown through in the last year. Please encourage all of our personnel to continue that trend. I think it's paying off great dividends for city hall, as well as all of our residents here in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grass. I would ask Mr. Eke to make a report on the strategic planning process.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and city council, we are less than one week away from the first meeting of our strategic planning, the Raymore, or reimagined Raymore, or community conversation. As many of you hopefully have seen, the banners have gone up, up and down Fifty-Eight Highway. We have already sent out about a thousand postcards and emailed the individuals that either you all have provided to us, or some of the local businesses that we have also been reaching out to individually. Also this week, starting last Friday and throughout the rest of this week, we are going to be, going to be posting a couple of different Facebook updates. We did kind of an experiment several weeks ago announcing the strategic planning events, and ended up getting just under about sixteen thousand impressions from that one single post. We're kind of interested in tracking this week, kind of how well that advertising will do, as well as several other kind of individual reach out and phone calls that we'll continue to do this week.
In addition to all the contacts that have been made so far, of course, all of the department heads have been talking with their commission members to make sure they're aware and encourage them to attend. As a logistical measure for next Monday night, Jonathan has suggested that because this is a communication feedback on the themes from the public, he would like for all of the council members and myself to sit at one table as a listening method. I was originally assigned to one of the data tables and have been reassigned to you all's table. I have no idea what that actually means in Jonathan's mind, but we'll all be sitting together next Monday night to allow for a listening session for what everybody is saying and being able to process the processed material that has come through. Once all of these are completed, of course, then the hard work starts for you all and me to process all that data. A lot of data will be coming in from these, and to move forward with the finalization of the actual plan, and that's actually what Jonathan and I and Laura are working pretty heavy on now, is the nature of those meetings that'll take place with you all in March to get to that final document that we're looking for to guide us. With that, that concludes the staff proportion of the report. I would remind the council that last Thursday night, we actually had a very successful focus group meeting that led to some of those questions, and I think Councilmember Holman was going to report out because he was the council member in attendance.
Yeah, just had a quick question. This came up in a conversation I was having with some other people, and I know that we have a lot of employees that live in the city. Have we done any communication to encourage our employees to come to these meetings?
Mike, have we, we put something on our community Facebook page as well, correct?
Correct. We have placed that on the Raymore employee Facebook page, and we've encouraged some of the department heads also to invite their, their staff as well.
Thank you, Mike. Sorry you had to swagger up here. Mike hurt himself in a tragic karaoke accident a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the, what we initially titled as the focus group session last Thursday night as the lone council member in the very small group setting. I would almost call it, as opposed to a focus group, our test project, to kind of see what kind of things we were going to see and things that we needed to change, and I was amazed at the kinds of things that we learned in a short two-hour period. One thing that I was told, and I really hadn't thought about, this will be our first probably foray ever into an experiment with pure democracy. We are not a democracy. We are a republic. We have elected representatives that represent us. This will be our first opportunity that we know of where we will have group meetings where literally any and all of our citizens will be able to participate in the process. A little bit of the flip side of that is that we're going to have to give them more guidance. We are used to the very civilized decorum of the dius, the agenda, when people can speak and when they can't. That was one thing that we learned very quickly, is that we're going to have to set the tone very quickly for everyone to make them understand that we are here for a specific purpose and a specific agenda. We are not here to talk about the geo-bond. We are not here to complain about your neighbor's cat, and those kinds of things. So that was one of the first takeaways, I think, that Jonathan and Laura and Meredith got out of the process. It's something that we'll need to be prepared for. I think that the way that things are going to be set up with the small tables, the technology portion allowing people to vote via the clicker is going to help with that process quite a bit. But I think it's very important in our role, at least from what I took away, will be the, the role as Mr. Fearborn has described, of us being at one table along with him to, as Jonathan put it, oversee the dance from the balcony, and it's amazing what you can take away from, from that process. So if anybody else would like further information later on about how the meeting went, I'd be glad to give it to you. I thought it was a big success. I know Jonathan and Laura said, and Meredith said that they thought it was as well. It really helped us shape how we should go forward with the process beginning next Monday night. That's all, sir. Thank you.
Just a couple of other items from my desk. The, at your places tonight, you noticed there's a fairly thick packet of correspondence from, from Mr. Willarth concerning the roles that the council members can assume, depending on whether they're at the dius or standing in their backyard with the upcoming bond issue, and kind of the do's and don'ts that are associated with that as far as information versus advocacy on the bond issue, and I'm sure he would be available if you would have any questions relative to that anytime. Also wanted to let you all know that Judge Nigro, they have not announced it yet, but Judge Nigro is considering on Thursday, February twenty-fifth, declaring an amnesty day for the court. Several local municipally, municipal courts have declared these at one time or another. Short form of it is that fines would be reduced on misdemeanors by fifty percent for persons coming in if their case is over a year old. Our hope would be that it would perhaps reduce, we have, we have between fifty and sixty fines that we have to write off each year because the people just simply don't show up. So obviously, if they showed up, most of these folks have a warrant out for their arrest. It's, it's a warrant-free, warrant-free zone for misdemeanors, traffic misdemeanors, if they do show up to pay the ticket. Again, as I indicated, several local communities are doing it. The judge can declare these. I believe Graham U. was the last one to do it, and Joe ended up providing some information to, relative to the ability to do that, to Judge Nigro at my request. That concludes staff report, sir.
Thank you. Move on to consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda to include items A, the city council minutes for January eleventh, 2016, item B, city council special session minutes for January ninth of 2016, and item C, the final acceptance of the city hall tower stabilization.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to unfinished business. You have the second reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-three by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-three by title only, an ordinance appointing William N. Marshall III as city prosecutor for the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the execution of a contract of services.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one thirty-three for the appointment of a city prosecutor.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-one thirty-three. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. You have a reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-four by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-four by title only, an ordinance appointing Capkean Willarth as city attorney for the city of Raymore, Missouri, and authorizing the execution of a contract of services.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one thirty-four for the appointment of city attorney.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-four. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business. There are two possible bills. I'll go ahead and ask for a reading of thirty-one forty A, participation in 2016 only.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one forty A, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, committing the city of Raymore to participate in the Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday in 2016 only.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that, I apologize, Your Honor, I think, point of order, do we need a staff report? Okay, staff report, please.
I thank you, sir. I'd call on Ms. Warner.
Thank you. Senate Bill eleven eighty-one enacted by the General Assembly in two thousand eight, established the Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday. This holiday exempts the sale of certain Energy Star certified appliances from state tax and takes place annually from April the nineteenth through the twenty-fifth. Municipalities may choose to participate in the holiday and allow city sales tax from these items to be exempted. For the city to participate, the council must pass an ordinance, and it may do so on a one-year-only basis or in perpetuity. Alternated ordinances have been prepared for council consideration, and since the establishment, to provide some history, in two thousand eight, council has elected to participate in an annual basis only. Thank you.
There is Bill thirty-one forty B, which does the action in perpetuity. I've asked for thirty-one forty A, which is year by year. If there is anybody that would prefer the perpetuity one, yes.
No, I'd support number A too, because Energy Star plants are really kind of becoming more than normal anymore, so at some point, I don't even see it being necessary, so I think on a yearly basis should be the way to go.
So now I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one forty A for participation in 2016 only for the Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-one forty A. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I've got a question for staff. The bill reads that it forgives, or, yeah, I'll use that term, forgives state taxes. Does this include any local municipal or special CID taxes that are also eligible for this reduction, or are those still in place? This particular bill is, is strictly for city sales tax. It exempts city sales tax, and by participating, it's kind of that reverse language. By participating, you are saying no for the period to the imposition of the sales tax. All of the CIDs, TDDs have voted on this. Of course, they have a little bit of a different focus when they're doing it, but all of them have voted against participation in the sales tax holiday. Okay, follow-up question. Just for clarification, for information, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it for my benefit and anybody that's listening. The sales tax, as far as the city sales tax, that applies to the, the city that it's being purchased in, not the city where we live, correct? Correct, sir. It is the sales tax where it's being purchased. Thank you.
Okay, motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. You have a reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-five by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-five by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Guyer Fence Company and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report.
Thanks, sir. I'll call on Mr. Mustine.
Thank you, sir, mayor, members of the council. Excited to be here before you tonight. This will be the first contract that we present you for this year of our CIP out of four projects, so we're, we're excited to get rolling, and we have a recommendation by the park board for this renovation of Recreation Park. As you all know, last spring, we did two fields at Recreation Park. This will be the completion of the remaining four fields. The park board has met, we sent out an RFP, we received four bids. Two bids come under budget. The park board met on January fifth and made a recommendation. We met again on January twelfth to review all the information, and the recommendation of the park board is before you to award Guyer Fence the contract for the renovation of these ball fields. I have written a staff report, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Thank you. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one thirty-five for an award of contract for Recreation Park Baseball Fields Renovation Project Phase Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You have the reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-seven by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-seven by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to approve payment to Bright Construction in the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred and eight dollars for emergency repairs at Owen Good Lift Station.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Grass to make the report.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On the Thursday before Labor Day of this year, public works operations staff encountered a leak in the Owen Good, Owen Good Force Main. With the impending holiday, we contacted Bright Construction, who was mobilized on the site to complete the repairs. As we got into, into the project, we determined that the, there was quite a bit of extensive damage to the pipe, and which was necessitated putting the original Force Main, the Dr. Lyer and Force Main back in service. We were, staff has reviewed the invoice. We have, we were on-site all weekend with Bright, verified the time and materials that were, that were used for the project, and recommend payment in the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred and eight dollars.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one thirty-seven for payment authorization for emergency repairs at Owen Good Lift Station.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-one thirty-seven. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. This happened in September the thirtieth. It was an emergency, so I can understand staff having to take care of it. But why did we have to wait five months to pay them? Seems to me like if the council ought to give the city manager some authority to pay for bills in this case, because I, I wouldn't want to do business with the city of Raymore if I had to wait five months for something that I did on an emergency basis for them.
Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, sir. The, the reason for the delay was, was frankly, two parts. The, as the council knows, and can be seen here, the following items on the agenda are associated with this same break. This was, the, the emergency repairs were being done by the same company who we were in negotiations with, relative to the possibility of maybe future legal action, trying to come to a conclusion with them on a statesmanlike way to approach how we wanted to deal with the actual full-scale repair of the line. They were good enough to withhold the emergency bill while we completed those negotiations, which is another sign, by the way, of, of how well those negotiations went, because it is a significant bill, and they were willing to hold off. In the meantime, we were also able to verify, as, as Mr. Grass indicated, there was a lot of fast and furious work going on during all of this, so you always want to be sure you, you catch your breath and make sure that what everybody said they were doing, they were actually doing, and the materials that they used that were actually put in place in the ground with a job like this. So they're not upset about it. We feel like it was, it was a cautious approach to it, and, and certainly under other circumstances, we'd make sure that, that with something like this, we approached the council much sooner to go ahead and make a payment like that.
Any other questions?
Another follow-up on that. I'd like to, do we have a policy whereby that the city manager can do within certain limits, can go ahead and make, pay for a bill without us having to always authorize it like this? At one time, I know we talked about it, but I don't know if we ever did anything or not. Do we have a policy in place to let the city manager do some, pay some of these smaller bills at his discretion?
In consultation with the mayor, there is an emergency, there is an emergency policy in place.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. You have a reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-six by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-six by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Bright Construction for the Owen Good Lift Station Pipe Replacement Project in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Grass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. Fearborn indicated, since the failure of the pipe was discovered back in September, we have been negotiating with Bright Construction and the material supplier for the, for the original project, and are bringing forward to you what amounts to part of a three-party settlement with the, for the replacement of the project. The amount of the request represents Bright replacing the pipe at, basically at their cost. The material supplier has agreed to donate the pipe and field support to reinstall the pipe, and so we are recommending award of this contract.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one thirty-six for an award of contract for Owen Good Lift Station Pipe Replacement.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. You have a reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-nine by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one thirty-nine by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with HDR Engineering Services for the Owen Good Lift Station project in the amount of seven thousand dollars, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Grass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What, what this contract represents is some engineering support to staff as we, we go down the project and look at redesign of the project. One of the issues that came about is it's been very difficult to identify a point of failure for the main, so we are requesting this engagement to do, just do some peer review to look at potential failure points that... to look at potential failure points that could have caused the, could have caused the pipe failure, and see if there are some things that we could do differently. Some of the things they're going to be helping us with is taking a look at the stream crossings, looking at the operations of the lift station, and if there's just any other things that could be done as we go down this road to minimize the potential of pipe failures in the future. And so, we do recommend the engagement of HDR.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3139 for the award of contract for the Owen Good Lift Station Engineering Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve first reading of Bill 3139. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have a reading of Bill 3138 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3138 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2016 capital budget.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. From time to time, we have the need for on-call electrical services. Projects involved with that are things such.
We're on 3138.
You've got to get the budget.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. We'll call on you in a minute for the other one.
In the previous several actions, council has approved a payment for the repairs of the Owen Good Force Main, replacement of the pipe, and engagement of an engineering service. We are also requesting that a contingency be included for this project, and are requesting a budget amendment in the amount of $245,285 to cover the costs for the project.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3138 for the fiscal year 2016 capital budget amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of Bill 3141 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3141 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a guaranteed pricing contract with Britton Electric Company to provide on-call electrical maintenance services.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. He's already given away the mystery of it, but I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I said, we have, from time to time, have the need for on-call electrical services. Examples of the project are like the Ballard lighting project that we're working on, replacement of fixtures within the building. So, what, the way we bid this is based on a basket of goods, and Britton Electric provided the best price for that basket of goods. Britton Electric historically has done quite a bit of work for the city. Most recently, the Depot Lighting Project at TB Hannah Station. They were, kind of, that was kind of bid as a design-build project, so they assisted with selection of the fixtures and kind of the overall lighting effect that is down there. So, we look forward to working with them on a number of projects here. Recommend award of the contract.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3141 for an award of contract for on-call electrical maintenance services.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3141. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have a reading of Bill 3142 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3142 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with a graphic resource for printing services of the Raymore Review and Parks and Recreation Guide.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Aki.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mayor and council. On February 1st, our agreement to print and distribute the Raymore Review will expire. We placed that out for bid starting in January, received five bids, and a graphic resource was our lowest bidder.
Questions of staff?
I'm just curious, is this the company we're using now, or is this a new one?
It is not. It is a new company.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this include postage of sending this out also, that figure, or no?
This is just for the printing.
Just for the printing? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One more quick question. Did the company that we're using now place a bid?
They did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3142 for an award of contract for printing and mailing services for the Raymore Review and Parks and Recreation Guide.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3142. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That takes care of our new business. We'll open the floor for public comments. Please keep your comments to maximum five minutes. So, you know, if you come forward, I'll close the public comments and move to Mayor and Council Communication. This evening, we'll start with Professor Holman.
I'll take that as a compliment, sir. Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate Lieutenant Abdellguad, being in the profession. I know what an accomplishment and honor it is to graduate from the FBI National Academy. Not from personal experience, of course, but it's renowned in the law enforcement field. It's quite a career achievement. Congratulations to him and his family. That's very admirable. And would also like to recognize, we have two members of the Parks Board, I think, two, yes, here tonight. Always good to see members of our volunteer boards here at the council meetings at different times. Thank you very much. And the final thing, I attended the employee function Saturday night down at the College Basketball Experience. Got to see Mr. Fearborn shoot some hoops and watch his team play. Enjoyed myself very much. Thank you for, staff, for letting us attend that. There were, I think, a total of four council members, there counting myself. Enjoyed ourselves and had a good time. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Councilmember Hubach.
I had a question, excuse me, concerning our charter. We have some conflicts in it, and I think they need to be resolved. And there's three ways in which we can do it. One, the city council can do it. They can have a charter commission, Charter Review Commission. And the third one is have the people present a petition. If I understand it, and I would like for the, excuse me, attorneys to tell me if I'm not correct on that, we can only do a charter review once every 10 years, because it says no less than 10 years. And we've got two more years. In order for it to be 10 years, it would have to be 2018 before we could come up with any changes. So, I am suggesting that the council take a look at it as the fastest way to get some changes made. We have some conflicts having to do with the mayor and the council having, baking of ties. There are some things about how the charter commission is supposed to work, and so I would like to see the council get started on, so that we can have it ready for election time. We can't do it for April, but we, if, we have to have it in May in order to have it in the August election, or in August in order to have it for November. And there was, excuse me, as I said, I would like to see us go ahead and get started on it.
Councilmember Abdellguad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just take a quick moment to echo the thanks to the Employee Planning Committee. I'm not sure what the official name is, who planned the party over the weekend. My husband and I went as well, and it was, it was lots of fun. It was something different you wouldn't get to do by yourself. And I think it's great that the city has a committee to plan things like that for the employees here and their families. It kind of feels funny, but I feel like I should congratulate my husband. And of course, thank the city for giving him that opportunity. It was definitely a once-in-a-lifetime experience for him, and I got to hear on a daily basis how much he enjoyed his time there, and all of the fabulous things that he learned, and about the people he met there. And it was a great experience for him, a great experience for our family, and hopefully, he can pay back what he's learned to the city. So, thanks for that opportunity for him and us. And finally, for everyone watching, I just want to take a minute to encourage everyone to come to the Strategic Planning Process Meeting that we're having next week, and bring a few friends. So, if you're not sure when and where, February 1st, at Eagle Glen is the first meeting. There will be two more after that. And is the time 7:00 p.m.?
It is 6:30.
6:30, okay.
And if I could dive in just with one more thing, childcare is provided right there. So, if you want to bring your kids, they're going to feed them. They're going to have a pizza party for them, and so that shouldn't be a holdback for anybody if you're talking to them.
Very good. We hope to see lots of people there, and like I said, if you can't come, pass the invitation along to a friend or several friends. We want to have a really good turnout.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank the city staff for putting together, again, I know what, city party or whatever they call it, but I had a great time. I also want to thank them. I had realization that my basketball game is gone. What little basketball game I had. I found out that it's gone forever, but I did have a good time. It was nice seeing everybody get there and kind of mingle, and it was, my wife had a good time too, which is important for me. So, again, thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Mr. Mayor, speaking of the Christmas party, Joe and I were just comparing notes, and we don't remember getting an invitation. I told him that could have been on purpose. Not really sure. Also, I'm really grateful for not getting the 40-inch snow that they got on the East Coast.
Councilmember Morehead.
I'll start first by giving my support to Judge Nygro for the court amnesty. I think a lot of people don't understand the complexity of that. In many instances, and I see this in a number of courts that I practice in, court records end up backing up, not because of court error or negligence. A lot of times, it's just people get a ticket and forget to show up, and if you see the volumes of, you know, the drawers full of files that end up getting backed up, courts have turned to this amnesty method to thin those out. It is very helpful. So, based on the statements that were made earlier, it's not because of our court has done anything wrong. It's just complexity of, sometimes it's just somebody who drove through, got a ticket, left, and never came back. And so, I really want to say, just a gesture of support to Judge Nygro to think to even do that. Second of all, I'll echo the comments toward Lieutenant Abdellguad. I want to say councilmember, because I'm sure you said it first. But, so I want to echo those, that, you know, recognition. But I, he did say something that, about thanking us for training and development. And I do want to say, and I speak only for myself, although I know no one up here would disagree with me, that we are happy to support our staff, and they are a wonderful investment. So, we're thrilled when opportunities like that can come about, and to hear that, you know, when they enjoy it as well is very fulfilling, and I know we benefit from all their efforts too. So, I think that, that kind of leads into appreciation of staff. I myself, I don't think I did any better than Councilman Barber on Saturday night, and don't want to say how badly I shot. A couple of things, though, that came of it, I, one, it's great, and we appreciate staff so much. So, it was fun to be able to share that with them. The only disappointment was I was hoping to have a good one-on-one game with Mr. Zur, but he did not attend. I hope next year I'll get that opportunity. And the only other disappointment was they had a slideshow that just showed pictures throughout the year, and the only negative thing I want to direct toward Mr. Crass, you know, a year ago, I saw that Pinewood Derby stuff, and a year ago, I had issued a challenge to the Public Works Department. So, since I conveniently was not invited to that, maybe some libation incentive would need to be offered. But, so I'm hoping that this year, I'd be willing to enter a car on that. So, but it was neat to see all the events that staff do together, and that we really are a family here. The final thing I'll say, I actually support Councilmember Hubach's desire for a review of the charter. I'm not asking for any determination tonight, but just as a, not for any particular item, but just, you know, we look at our Uniform Development Code periodically, and don't necessarily have problems. I don't feel there's a problem with our charter. I just, but just to be complete and transparent, it never hurts. And if we are, not within a window, okay, but if we are, it never hurts. And so, I think that's a wonderful suggestion to at least explore and consider. So, I hope that that question by her does not go unanswered. And with that, thank you very much.
Commissioner Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to say I echo what everybody said about our fine staff, but I do. Especially, I'll take some time to recognize Lieutenant Ali Abdellguad. Extremely pleased to have him in the role that he is. Even to have him just as a staff member here in Raymore is an honor. He spoke tonight about how it was an honor for him. For me, it's an honor for me to have representatives on that level of that caliber working here for as long as he has. You know, one thing that came through his comments tonight, and his posture, and his demeanor standing there in front of us, he don't talk very much in front of us. I think that's probably one of two times that he's talked in front of me since I've been on council. And what we've seen here tonight is what you get in Ali Abdellguad. He's humble. He's very personable. He's very approachable, and he's very helpful. I just, you know, I can't say enough about him, you know. So, it's very, very nice to hear him and see him in action and be as preservative as he is. It came through, and it's just, you know, like Mr. Morehead said, you know, it matters to this council member to make sure that I support them with the training that they need, because quite frankly, you hear a term of one percenter, and one percenter's not a good term, but Ali's even better than that. He's a less-than-one percenter, and he said that tonight. So, congratulations, Ali. He's not in here tonight, but I know he hears me. Thank you for everything you've done for us in this community. Other than that, I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Burke.
No comment.
Okay, I'll echo the comments that everybody made about Lieutenant Abdellguad. And that's it. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss personal matters as authorized by Missouri Statute 610.021, subsection 13.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Abdellguad?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
We'll retire to executive session. We'll rejoin the main meeting just to dismiss. Thank you.